So. Do we have enough from both? Council, we'll go ahead and call this meeting order for the record. It is February twenty third four oh one P M. And this is joint meeting in the Meridian City Council and the Ada County Highway District Commission. Does A C H D also need to call their meeting order?
We'll go ahead and call the meeting order.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. If we could just do a roll call.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Overton.
Here.
Councilwoman Perro. I don't think I saw her. Councilman Cavanagh, Councilman Borton, Councilman Hoagland. Mayor Simmons.
Here.
And there is a quorum for the A C H D commissioners.
First up is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland, I move adoption of the agenda as published. I have a motion second to adopt the agenda. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed nay. The ayes have it and the agenda is adopted. Is it adopted? Okay, we're good. All right. Then with that, we will just move on into item one. The first item is the Meridian Intersection Pedestrian Safety Task Force Updates. As Miranda comes forward, I just want to say thank you to both A C H D and West Data for getting together with us all and taking a look at what Miranda is going to talk about. We've obviously had some unfortunate situations and accidents and deaths in our community over the last several years. And I think this is important for us to take a look at. So, Brenda, I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I did distribute out scope that for the task force, this is a draft scope. We can discuss tonight and make some changes based on your input. So as the mayor said, this task force came from the catalyst of the tragic accidents that occurred in Meridian. It was as a result of a request from you elected officials that staff and elected officials be involved together to look at various sites throughout Meridian and how we can improve the safety at those locations for pedestrians. So specifically, we're looking at major intersections and pedestrian crossings, particularly around schools. Our major goals for this are to improve the mobility network for all users. Use data, both we're using both data that we currently have, collecting data, and then also using some of that field through site visits. And centralizing the leading agencies' resources so that the community can have a better feedback loop when they make requests and when we make improvements. There are several members of the task force from several different agencies. As you can see there, we have a broad representation from lots of different groups. We began our kickoff meeting by reviewing the past efforts and the current efforts that are going into improving pedestrian safety in these areas. There are many different agencies that look at these things that overlap geographic boundaries and overlap in efforts. So we began by looking at those and seeing where we can coordinate through those processes and where some of those processes can assist in this task force. We have, we set our timeline in that kickoff meeting and agreed to a timeline of around six months. It may be extended slightly, but we're looking to accomplish this in a six-month timeframe for this initial evaluation. The sites that we're going to be looking at in Meridian will be arterial arterial intersections, arterial collector signaled intersections and enhanced crosswalks. And those will be the ones with hawk signals and R R F Bs. We want to gather data on every intersection that will be done through A C H D staff, planning staff, and Meridian Police Department will be going out and doing site visits and collecting photos. A C H D staff and Meridian staff will be working together to compile data and then Meridian Police Department will also be compiling data with staff or crash data that we can review. So after that initial data gathering happens, the next step that we're going to be working towards at our next meeting, which will be late March or early April timeframe, will be to start identifying solutions to these areas. We're going to be looking at short-term and long-term solutions for pedestrian safety, reviewing public comments that have come in, the data analysis, site visits, and reviewing policy and code to see if there's anything overarching that we can make changes to have improvements continue on through policy and code. After we have identified some solutions and we're coming to the end of that six-month-ish effort, we're going to bring forward those recommendations to both city council and A C H D commission to review and go forward. We're also hoping from that kickoff meeting, we heard a lot of feedback that the group was hoping this effort would continue past the six-month, not just be the six-month evaluation, but that from this, some kind of interagency group can evolve and be a continuing effort that goes on into the future. So at this point, that's a brief explanation of the scope, and I can stand for any questions and expand on anything you're interested in further.
Thank you, Miranda. I know we also had a couple of folks up here in the dais that were present for those conversations. So see if any of them first have anything that they would like to add to what Miranda has presented from your perspective.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
Thank you. I think maybe one piece that was missing is just there, there was definitely a thought around gathering feedback from the community in a centralized way and making sure that we're getting the perspective of Meridian residents on all of the intersections and crossings. And I think one piece that we were hoping, and this is a great summary, that would come out of this long term would be even an ongoing website or portal or a centralized place where citizens could bring forward concerns that would be directed to the agencies, plural. So something more centralized. I don't think we've thought through what that would look like yet, but that was one thought that the stakeholder group had so far.
Councilman Overton.
Excellent job, Miranda. When we first started this, I think one of the main points I really wanted to make sure that we stressed was at no point in this task force is there any comment to say that these intersections that already exist are unsafe. They are safe. What we're trying to do is take them to the next level and see what we can do as a collaborative effort to take them beyond where they are now and make them even safer. And part of that discussion on coming up with a, almost a one-stop shop where people can go to a place and look at this information and have all the input from all the different players at the table instead of having to try to go to five or six different websites to get that information. But it's a work in progress. I know we'll get there. And, and, Randy, you're doing a fantastic job.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say thanks, Miranda. Thank you to A C H D staff. Thank you to West Ada and thank you for, thank you to our council leadership as well. I think I was really heartened by the meeting and I really am, I applaud you all for partnering with us on this. And I'm, I'm definitely optimistic that commission and all of us will love to hear the priorities and the needs that come out of this task force's work. So just thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. Councilman Cavanagh.
Thanks, Miranda. First, I don't know who was in charge of putting together the dream team of membership, but it's really like a who's who of thoughtful community leaders. So I really appreciate all the folks that are giving up some of their time to be members. Maybe a, a suggestion and a question. So as you kind of laid out the scope, Miranda, a piece that I, I think is probably contemplated but not captured here is, is the informed side. So once we've all come together, you've brought forth some ideas, you've presented to, you know, A C H D and the city, how are we informing our community about this? And I guess part of that stems from how are we also communicating with our charter schools that are in Meridian? Makes complete sense that West Ada, as large it is, it has got membership, but as we continue to see an increase in charter schools across Meridian and the valley, they also present some of the similar challenges that we're trying to attack here. So I just would encourage that however we can translate that same information that we're sending to West Ada, that we're sending into those other individual schools or their leadership so that they can be kept in the loop and invited to pretend as, as viewers or attendees, maybe not as a member, but that they can be kept in the loop.
Mr. Mayor. Councilman Cavanagh, that's a great point. And it did come up in our stakeholder meeting, our kickoff, and in the expanded version of this scope, that's many, many pages. There is note that we need to keep the charter schools involved. There's also note that we can reach out to school administrators because they know best what's going on around their schools on the ground and get their feedback about issues that they're hearing from, from parents, and charter schools will be involved in that as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hanson.
Yeah, thank you. I, I'm very excited about this. You do have a dream team. You have Ryan Head, who led the effort at A C H D to develop our livable streets performance measures, which are level of traffic stress on a scale of one through four. And so those tools are already there. So it's very exciting to see that metric that can be used and then are used in more and more circles to say, ah, this is, how do we move from this area being a level of traffic stress three to a level of traffic stress one? So people will feel safe using it. So those metrics are there. We've got those tools. The great thing is we might, through this process, actually get even better input to refine them even more. So they become more of a planning tool. So this is fantastic. And if Ryan was here, I'd give him a round of applause because he put a huge amount of work into developing those metrics.
Mr. Mayor. I just want to speak to that, that dream team. And I love the way that's phrased. This effort started with the West Ada School District, A C H D, and the city of Meridian. And word spread very quickly about the task force. Mentioned it at one public meeting, and after that, I got requests from other agencies to be involved. So that's why we do have additional agencies involved in that as well. So it really is a dream team, and I agree with that. And people are excited to be participating in.
Any additional questions or comments? Councilboard.
Couple of questions. I'll just, I'll give you all three, just to see how they're being addressed. One is, is the scope of what's being reviewed also contemplate recommended changes in design standards for future growth and development for pedestrian safety? Or is it just addressing existing?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton, yes, we did, we do want to look at policies and code going forward so that we can address these things proactively in the future.
Second one, Mr. Mayor. There's the second question concerns, maybe this is ahead of us, whether or not there may be consideration to recommend changing some weight structure in the five-year integrated work plan to address pedestrian safety.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, yes, that did come up. So we did look at, as a group, how this effort can inform the integrated five-year work plan prioritization. We haven't gotten into the nitty-gritty about how that would inform the weights, but we did talk about how that would inform as a city, our prioritization process, and hopefully as an A C H D organization that this can bleed into that process as well.
It's on the radar. Mr. Mayor, the last two were comments that I heard that I think are fantastic components of it. One is that, that one of the takeaways is, it sounds like creates some, some permanent structure to this process, an ongoing endeavor to promote pedestrian safety. Which I think is a brilliant model to use and that there's going to be some form of permanent component for public input, some repository of these types of improvements. We all know that folks in, in the neighborhoods who are impacted daily by some of these challenges see it first. And it's just a great way to, to use that to find out where any of us might know, ways to get something on this group's radar. Having both of those, part of it is going to make.
Thank you.
All right. We'll see. No other questions or hands raised. Thank you, Miranda. Appreciate it very much. And we're just going to dovetail off of that to a certain extent or in a different way and move on to item two, which is leading pedestrian interval campaign. And Kelly will be providing that information for me, C H D.
All right, Mr. Mayor, council members, Madam President, commissioners, thank you for having me. My name's Kelly Baker. I'm a traffic engineer at A C H D. So I'm just here today to kind of go over our let's get there safely, safely signalization project. And that's implementing the leading pedestrian intervals at our signals throughout Ada County. So this is part of an ongoing effort that we've had, part of the let's get there safely program. And that includes many pedestrian enhancements that we've made, kind of dovetailing off. We just want to enhance the safety that's already there. So what is an L P I? Leading pedestrian interval, interval is a signal timing adjustment that at intersections, it increases the pedestrian safety. So what it does is when a pedestrian approaches the signal and they push the push button, it gives them typically a three to seven head start or enhanced cross. So they are in the crosswalk past the first lane of travel before the cars in the parallel direction have their green signal. So it helps establish their presence in the crosswalk. Part of the L P I process is there has been a thirteen percent reduction in pedestrian vehicle crashes. This is part of a study from F H W A. It also increases drivers yielding due to the pedestrians visibility. They're already movement in the crosswalk before the cars get the green signal, as well as it establishes their right of way. They're already in the crosswalk. They don't need to yield to the vehicles. The vehicles yield to them. Does require the accessible pedestrian signals. Those are the audible push buttons that we have at some signals throughout the county. It will adjust the signal length or the available green time for the drivers. So part of our L P I implementation progress, we do currently have it at twenty-one signals throughout Ada County. There is four hundred and fifty-seven total signals. So we're just building off that progress and going to get going with that. So our twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three plan is to plan and also begin implementing them at the signalized intersections all throughout Ada County. We are prioritizing our first kind of emphasis on implementing them, our locations near schools, near parks, pedestrian attractors, and that includes downtown cores. So next step, we're currently just finalizing our planning and collecting data, really getting a good inventory of what we have out there, what needs to be improved. And we have an A C H D work session with the commission on March first next week. So I am open to any questions or comments.
Thank you, Kelly. Council, commission, questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
Just a comment. What a fantastic initiative. Thank you. I'm sure I speak for everybody that this is a great idea, and we really appreciate you guys doing this.
Mr. Mayor. Councilman Hoagland.
Kelly, thanks. A C H D does a good job of synchronizing stoplights in certain areas that help facilitate flow of traffic and move it quickly. But with this, if there's a school zone, that sort of thing, and a crosswalk, how does that impact a, a traffic lane? Ten Mile, I know, has a school on it and different places do that. Does that have an impact to those synchronizations?
It does, Councilman. So it, we do take that into effect when we're doing the corridor signal timing. We look at those signals, what's along the roadway, what the drivers are doing to help with that coordination.
Commissioner Goldthorpe.
Thought that was on. Okay, now it's green. Sorry. I'm used to red. They turn mine off all the time. The, the idea for this, A C H D has known about it for some time, this technology. But one of your I T, one of my I T buddies who lives in Bear Creek was the one that communicated to me that, that he wanted me to speak at his funeral because it was coming quick because he was dodging cars going across Overland Road there. It stuttered in front of Wahoos. And so he suggested, why don't you just fix the timing so that I get a little lead start so these people can see me? And so I contacted the director and the rest is history. But it was kind of funny because we had just recently before then started looking serious at this. And so the, the sooner this can be completed throughout the, the county, the better I'll feel about it. But I was driving in to this meeting today and I, I was stopped at the, the light hitting east on Franklin and Ten Mile. And when the oncoming traffic was going south on Ten Mile, turning left from Overland, and the, the lights were solid red, there were still four vehicles that continued, about eight all total, but two on each lane that kept turning left after the solid red. So I was thinking, all right, we're going to be talking about this today. One, two, three, you know, four seconds into it, there were still cars turning. And so my hope is because the legislature won't allow us to put cameras on these intersections and, and, you know, fix the wagons for these guys doing the five-second too late left turns or anything else that when, when law enforcement has a spare moment, that they'll possibly start helping with some of this. I know they already do, but it just hit me kind of between the eyes when I was driving in today.
Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner McKinney.
Thank you. Kelly, just a quick question on this. The, the leading pedestrian interval, of course, that, those additional few seconds, that's going to occur just after the all-red phase and prior to the green phase for the particular forward motion. So what that's going to do, correct me if I'm wrong, is that's going to lengthen the total cycle length for, for any given intersection where we implement this. Is that, is that correct?
Commissioner, yes, that is correct. And each signal, the plan is that each signal's timing will be reviewed. So if there can be adjustments to, if we have extra capacity in the green time, we can maybe adjust that. But there is a potential that it will change the cycle length.
Okay. So either, either the cycle length gets longer overall, or the green interval for any given movement gets reduced, one way or the other, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, so one way or another, the total green time per movement at any given intersection, you know, is, is diminishing overall. So either you have fewer intervals per hour or you have fewer seconds per interval. Is, is that a fair statement?
Commissioner, yes, that's correct.
Okay. So I guess the only reason I mentioned this is that it's, it's the, the kind of thing we need to, to keep in mind, of course. And nearly everything we do is a trade-off. But what we're doing here is this pedestrian interval, leading pedestrian interval, overall, the capacity of any given intersection will drop by some amount. So that's the trade-off that we're giving. Lesser vehicle capacity, potentially more congestion because of that, to, to provide this leading pedestrian interval. And I think that's, it's worth recognizing that, you know, everything we do in, in highways and transportation is a trade-off. So that's an important factor, I think, that we just all need to be aware of and how this will work. So thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Always yield to a commission president.
Pickering.
Thanks, Councilman Cavanagh. I just want to highlight that, yes, it'll impact the timing. But of course, this only happens when, if and when a pedestrian is pushing the push button. This isn't something that's impacting the entire network at all times, right? It's only when people are trying to cross and, and use those crosswalks. So I just want to highlight that. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Thanks. Commissioner, Commissioner President Pickering for answering the question I was going to, one of the questions I was going to pose. Kelly, thanks for the update. I want to make sure that I was kind of tracking your presentation correctly. Twenty-one intersections now, but the plan is to roll them out to eventually all of them. Is that over a one-year, three-year, five-year, ten-year period? What's kind of the, the plan to get them all implemented?
Councilmember, that right now, our plan is to, and by the end of this year, whatever we can implement, we will. And then at that point, we have to look at if there's major improvements that have to be done to the signals, then at that point we'll plan from there. And it, as soon as we can, basically.
Mr. President. A follow-up, if I may. And Kelly, please forgive my, my ignorance for asking this question, but we, we, you know, we have many state highways that run through Meridian. Do those intersections get included in this plan as well? Or is that separate because it's a state highway?
Yeah, of course, Councilmembers. So we have had discussions with I T D at this point about it, and they're open to reviewing it with us with our plan. They do want to see the impacts that it would have on the traveling public, but we do have it at a number of I T D signals throughout the county already. So they are open to it on their signals.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Overton.
I understood that this is, only certain signals currently can just be changed to this, that some, some of the signals that we're going to be doing, there's a cost associated with them to convert them to this program?
Yeah, Councilmember, there is some, going to be some cost to them. Like I mentioned, they have to have the A P S or the push buttons that are audible. There are some signals that do not have those and have not had that upgraded at that point. And that is for the blind pedestrian who, if there is no audible push button, they rely on traveling cars to guide them on what direction they can cross. So if they don't have any cars moving, they need that audible tone to let them know when and where they can cross. So there is going to be half, we are going to have to install that at some signals.
Follow-up.
It's been over to.
Just to, Kelly, just a quick comment on that. I don't care what the cost is, as we're. I don't care what the cost is, as we're talking about safety, but I know we're gonna get asked about that at some point. What a program like this overall is gonna cost. I just want to be able to have that conversation so we can adequately state what that safety factor.
And on that, councilman, um, so we are at our work session next week with the ACHD commission. We are gonna have a uh, proposed budget for that, an estimated budget. So we will have kind of more, little more details at our next meeting.
Commissioner Goldthorpe.
One last comment on that, and that that's so that uh, you know we're serious about it. I appreciated your comment about cost. It's how several of us feel, most of us, not all. ACHD has a a really good reputation nationwide for all things related to to ADA compliance. And so we're, we're working as fast as our budget, which I would not mind it off if it was increased. Uh, as our budget will allow to make sure all of those are audible. We get criticized a lot for all things ADA related, then all of a sudden you have to slap somebody around a little bit. Say, look, look at what these associations and these national groups or government entities or whatever think about our efforts. And uh, we're considered almost like cutting edge. But in this particular regard, we, we can do better. And as far as I'm concerned, finish it yesterday.
I won't ask. We'll move on. Any, any other questions or comments? All right. So with that, we'll move on to item three. Looks like we have Mr. Lucas coming up to to give a Linder Road overpass update.
Well, good afternoon, uh, Mr. Mayor, Madam President, members of the council, members of the commission, uh, great to be here. Um, and to provide this update on the, on the Linder um, overpass and also the expansion and enhancement of Linder between Overland and Franklin Roads. I'm just gonna walk through some slides, mostly graphics, uh, kind of that you'll see. Get a feel for what this is gonna look like and feel like. Um, we are in preparation for a public involvement session coming up here in the next few weeks. And so you're getting a little bit of a preview of what we're gonna talk to the public about um, as we move forward on the design of this, of this project. I do want to highlight and just uh, state that obviously ACHD staff is coordinating very carefully with the city of Meridian on this project. There's a task force that we are actively participating in, and we obviously recognize the city's financial contribution for this design. So just to provide a um, an overview of this area. Obviously, we're working between Overland and Franklin Roads. The um, overpass itself will be brand new over the interstate. Um, ACHD actually has much of the right of way needed on the south side of the interstate um, through previous dedications and and developments. Um, but there's no road there. Uh, there's just a, just right of way. On the north side, we're looking at a a two lane road that currently is basically operates almost like a collector or local road. It's not, it doesn't receive that much traffic because it doesn't go anywhere and primarily serves uh, just those neighborhoods south of of Franklin. And you can imagine when there's an overpass, the characteristics and the traffic along this corridor are going to increase substantially. Uh, that all being said, you have various uh, attractors and generators, um, different irrigation facilities. And I do want to highlight Peregrine Elementary School, um, which is uh, at that location. Um, and then, and the, and the um, you know, different pedestrian facilities that we plan to add um, as part of the project. So this is a a typical uh, roadway section that that will be as part of this project. You can see the uh, two travel lanes uh, in each direction. We are contemplating for much of the project, a raised center median, which is something that ACHD has began, began implementing on all of our arterial projects. Uh, these vertical elements uh, provide um, speed mitigation benefits. They also provide an opportunity to partner with the city potentially on landscaping or other features that that the city may choose to um, include on the project. I also want to highlight the um, multi-use pathways, which have become uh, essentially the standard for ACHD projects on multi-lane arterials. Uh, these are a ten foot multi-use facilities buffered from the adjacent roadway. Um, and we've implemented these at various projects uh, within Meridian primarily so far. But you'll be seeing these across um, all of the of the county as we move forward with our um, with our roadway projects. So this is a, obviously a a coordination project with ITD. There's a overpass uh, associated with this, uh, with this project. And you can see the the typical section that they're looking at, uh, the extension of that multi-use pathway over the uh, the interstate. Um, and then the associated uh, travel lanes that are required for the the traffic demands. Uh, please, the fencing and some of these other details are not finalized. This is just for graphical purposes, and I know the city has interest in the aesthetics, as does ACHD um, at the overpass and some of the other areas along the project. And those details are being contemplated throughout the design process. Just another view of that uh, new overpass and the uh, you know, the widening of the of the roadway, the multi-use facilities. Um, this is a pretty significant transportation uh, project for the Treasure Valley. And this gives you a feeling for um, some of the the differences and changes that will be there. Uh, I do want to highlight specifically on the north side of the interstate because we have to build the road up to get it over the freeway. Um, there's gonna be some substantial impacts to existing properties um, in that area. And there are several existing properties that will um, be uh, I would say severely impacted by this project. Highlighting that multi-use pathway design, you can see the uh, the buffer space that we're providing, which varies um, a- along the project, but a minimum of uh, four to five feet there. Um, and this is the uh, we've seen a lot of good feedback on this as we've implemented these projects. Um, it consolidates the bicycle and pedestrian use up and out of the roadway. Um, and and the uh, these types of uh, separated and protected facilities um, uh, we believe are um, kind of the way to move forward um, and uh, from 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 a bicyclist and pedestrian facility standpoint um, on these types of projects. I also want to highlight, there will be several uh, pedestrian crossings along this corridor. And these are the types of facilities that were, um, that have been discussed today. Um, these are controlled facilities, stop control, um, lighting uh, at the, at the roadway and pedestrian level to help uh, ensure that everyone can see each other and that we have some predictability. Um, these pedestrian hybrid beacons are um, implemented across our county. Um, and uh, for the most part, we have seen uh, really good success as the drivers primarily of Ada County and the pedestrians and cyclists have become used to these facilities. Um, there's generally uh, pretty good compliance that we're seeing across the county. And we would anticipate that on this project. So I do want to highlight um, some of the ongoing conversations uh, related to partnership. Uh, I know there's discussions right now at the project team level and amongst the stakeholders and the um, the committee put together on this project, discussions related to uh, center median islands and possible landscaping, potential landscaping in those buffer areas, um, and additional uh, you know, elements such as that. Um, aesthetics related to the bridge, uh, abutment walls. Some of the walls will be relatively visible from the the interstate. Some of them won't, and so I know there's some, on previous projects i- in the city, there's been some a desire to look at a possible enhancements to those walls. Um, and and that's the uh, the reference I'm, I'm making here. So just to uh, kind of provide that uh, update on where we're at. Design is underway. Um, that's uh, estimated at approximately one point seven million dollars. And that's the um, the funded portion of this project. Uh, right of way, um, looking at the impacts, we do anticipate a significant right of way budget uh, needed for this project at about five point five million, and that's, that's an estimate. Um, the right of way acquisition process is um, very formal. And we uh, we have to go through that process with those owners um, and negotiate with them individually um, as we go through this. Uh, but we expect a significant portion to go towards right of way. I do want to highlight, uh, just recently, uh, the ACHD commission allocated a portion of funding um, from uh, from their budget adjustment process to the right of way acquisition uh, for this, for this project. It's not all of the five point five million, but it was a portion of some uh, project savings and other things that just happened. So right of way is now partially funded. And um, I anticipate through the integrated five year work plan, discussions with the commission related to the remaining funding for right of way and then the remaining funding for construction um, as we, as we continue to discuss uh, the project. I do want to highlight current estimates, the roadway portion about eleven million dollars. Uh, the bridge, which would be ITD's responsibility at about six point five million. So for a total project cost of about seventeen point five million dollars um, to get this one, to get this one done. So next steps, um, this is a kind of uh, it's live right now, really. We're meeting with property owners over the next couple of weeks. We like to go out to those property owners that we uh, anticipate are gonna be significantly impacted and have a face-to-face conversation with them. Um, prior to general public involvement, uh, we have found that helps uh, those property owners to feel um, like we uh, understand their concerns, which we do. Um, and that they uh, they feel like we're listening to to some of those impacts and and we're, and we're in the process of doing that right now. Have various meetings set up over the next couple of weeks. Um, we will be um, meeting with the, once again, with the Meridian Task Force on March thirteenth. They're gonna see a similar presentation to what we're showing today. And then that uh, public involvement process, which we have largely done online in recent years and have found that it has garnered a lot more input than those live public meetings. We post everything online, we do mailers, we do outreach, um, reach out to the HOAs and neighborhoods. And there's been a lot of good uh, uh, success in that approach. So we're starting that, as I said, mid, mid-March, late March, there'll be a two-week period of of comments. Uh, we'll gather after that's all closed, we'll gather all that information um, and then uh, move forward uh, as we, as we take all that into consideration. Um, and then we'll also be doing some specific neighborhood and stakeholder meetings during that process. Uh, there's a couple neighborhoods down in that area that have organized homeowners associations. Um, one large neighborhood really, and we'll be meeting specifically with that homeowners association and their leadership to talk about um, the project um, and and how it works. Fortunately, um, looking at the design, we're really trying to limit the impacts um, to the landscaping in that neighborhood association. There will be some for sure. Um, but much of the impacts on the, on the west side of the road, um, there's not much we can do to mitigate those due to the proximity of the homes and the businesses to the roadway as it stands today. So that's where we're um, that's where we're at. Glad to answer any questions you may have related to the project. And just before I finish, I do want to highlight um, Rick Patricelli, who is our most recent project manager on this actually has moved on to a different position at ACHD, and we're really happy for him. Brian McCarthy, who's one of our uh, project management supervisors, is uh, overseeing the project right now. And he's a seasoned project manager at ACHD. He's here today. Um, but he, that we, we do not anticipate any issues with any type of handoff from a project management perspective. And he's already met with your staff and will be at the um, upcoming uh, stakeholder meetings and task force meetings. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Justin. And first, I'd just like to say thank you to you and the team at ACHD and Commissioner President for the conversations we had and for getting the right of way money. Um, moving forward at this point in time in the, in this project, I think it says a lot about the commitment of everyone involved. I think it also speaks volumes to ITD as the other partner in this project. Um, and hopefully will allow us to coordinate a a construction funded year with them in the not-too-distant future. So appreciate that. With that, additional questions, comments? Commissioner Goldthorpe.
Uh, one, is that at least from how I observe the uh, uh, funding restrictions or strings or whatever you want to call them, changing from the Idaho Legislature. There's uh, every reason to think that uh, for whatever reason, desire, necessity, no place else to spend money. Projects like this are go, are going to the uh, top of the priority as fast as you want them to, if not faster. So I I would look at that as a, one of the only positives from those negative string deals that uh, plus the people in Kuna and other areas are ecstatic about this. Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner McKinney.
Um, Justin, just a quick question back on the, on the funding uh, question. Um, last I was aware, uh, and I'm wondering if you can give an update on this. The um, the portion of the funding that needs to come from uh, the Idaho Transportation Department for uh, for building the bridge structure itself. When last we talked about it, that was still something that wasn't actually officially on their uh, budget planning uh, lit priority list. Has there been any change in that? Uh, if so, what? And if not, what do prospects look like going forward?
Mr. Mayor, Madam President, Commissioner McKinney. So in our conversations with ITD, um, they are, I believe, in the process of placing the Linder overpass on their list of projects um, in their uh, up, in their updated plans. Um, they have a a bridge replacement and a, and a bridge program, and this will be part of that. I believe their intention originally was to include it as an unfunded project, but on the list, which is one step above where it is today, which is not, not on the list. I think in conversations with ITD, they, they understand the um, you know, the desire to move forward on the project. And I think uh, as, as um, ACHD and the city move forward with continually um, prioritizing and allocating funding towards the project. Um, that, that could possibly help them respond in kind with some type of funding allocation.
If I may follow up, um, what is the likelihood, based on where things stand right now? What is the likelihood that the funding issue relative to the state uh, is going to affect our intention and our plan as far as a schedule for getting this done?
Mr. Mayor, Madam President, Commissioner McKinney. It's hard for me really to speak to the state's ability to fund the project. I, 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 I don't want to um, in any way uh, overstate or understate their ability to do so. Um, I, I think the conversations I've had with their staff at District Three have been positive. Um, but ultimately, you know, they allocate funding through a process. Uh, this type of project is likely going to have to go through some type of board action to receive uh, funding. Uh, because it's a new structure and not a rebuild, there's different um, uh, processes and procedures that they have to go through to get funding for this type of project. I think there's a lot of good news coming out of the uh, state legislature when it comes to funding opportunities for this type of project, especially with some of the um, current discussions ongoing related to uh, new funding sources that have been added over the last couple of years and potential um, grant funding sources. I, these are kind of state grants that potentially uh, agencies like ACHD and the city of Meridian could seek. Um, and so I think this project, uh, when you get design going, you get right of way going, I think it has good momentum.
Remind me, Justin, uh, what portion is impact fee eligible, since we're adding capacity to an arterial? So it's impact fee eligible.
Um, Mr. Mayor, uh, Madam President, a significant portion of this project is impact fee eligible. It falls within our um, within our capital improvements plan. Um, as a, as one of the uh, critical connections, as a five-lane facility. ACHD is unable to spend impact fees on state facilities, we have to spend them within our own jurisdiction. So we're not able to use impact fees to pay for the state's portion, and to my knowledge, the state has no impact fee. System or ability to collect impact fees for projects like this at this time. So a roadway project like this, it's not all impact fee eligible. The pedestrian facilities and some of the other facilities that we're building are not impact fee eligible. But the roadway expansion itself is, and so from a cost perspective, and Christie could probably answer this. But it's in that probably 50 to 60% impact fee eligible from a cost perspective.
Sounds whatever.
Justin, every time you come and talk to us, we get a little bit closer on the project, and I appreciate that, and I've got a. Constituent in that neighborhood, my mother in law, who gets more and more excited about being able to see her grandkids faster and faster. So you're making me a little bit more of a hero tonight, I appreciate that, but your. Your comments about the impact on on the neighborhood and the businesses, and I applaud you guys for being proactive and reaching out to those that are going to be impacted. Have you heard any feedback from them leading up to this, you know, any concerns, questions? I'm obviously really excited about this project, I know many of us that up here are, but it's not lost on me that this could have some. Potential negative consequences for some people in the short run. And I'm just curious, what are you hearing and are there things that we as a Meridian City Council need to be hearing? I guess from them on your behalf.
Mr. Mayor, Madam President, I don't think I would categorize what we've heard so far as. You know, an outcry or anything like that, we have had some interaction with. Some neighbors out there and longtime citizens. Some who live within the City of Meridian, I believe the subdivision on the west side is a is a county subdivision that has been there for a long time. And this is going to significantly change the form and function of this roadway, there's no doubt about that. And so I think there's some trepidation about that from some use some some neighbors. But I would say in general, this project has been in the books for a long time, and I think there's been an expectation. For this expansion and for the overpass, I think the City of Meridian has. Clearly indicated its priority, and I I would say that what we've heard so far has not been. Anything that I'm overly concerned about, that said, we are starting in a couple of weeks, the. The big public involvement push where we will hear and categorize all of the comments from those neighbors. As I say, also, we'll be doing a lot of on the ground, person to person discussions with those properties most impacted. And and you know, that can go a lot of different ways, sometimes people are ecstatic and they look at as an opportunity, sometimes people aren't, and so we'll we'll work through those individual processes.
Mr. Mayor, and I I just want to reinforce what Justin said, because I think I'm very impressed with the way in which our planning department. Has actually gone out and worked with neighbors. And I'll I'll raise Colister as an example, some of you may remember about 12 years ago. We came up with this idea, let's put sidewalks on Colister, we need to make it safe. Well, I don't know how the outreach worked back then. But we have a planning staff that went out and they went door to door. And actually, some people on that street gave them some ideas of what to do to incorporate. So the way our planning staff approaches it is that they actually see these folks as. Sources of ideas for improvements that could be incorporated into the concept. Because they have to live with it, they'll have to live with it all the all the time, and there's a wide, wide range of design options. To protect them from sound and other things that 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 might or might be of concern, but. They're going to go door to door, and you're welcome to go with them when they do.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Justin, appreciate very much, we'll see you in a few weeks. With that, we'll move on to item four, which is the Eustick Road Maintenance Complex update.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Madam President, council members, commission. For the record, I'm Jennifer Behringer, I'm the Deputy Director of Maintenance for Ada County Highway District. And I'm going to give you an update on where we are on the Eustick Maintenance Complex. First off, key goals, as we're building the facility and the complex. We want to ensure appropriate facilities to meet our maintenance operation needs. Now and kind of moving into the future, and our number one goal is to serve the public. And then secondly, but I know very important to you is ensuring the timing, the maintenance complex. Operations with the Eustick Road widening. The deceleration lane construction and that Naomi Lane signalization, so I'm going to talk to all of those pieces today. So key takeaways. Right up front, we're right, we're in design right now, we started it kind of a couple of months ago, so we anticipate 100% design completion in May. Of 2024. Five years phase build out, so we'll start the building in 24, 25, 26 through into 28, might go into 29. Eustick Road widening is on track, so they're currently in design with right of way procurement. And construction will begin in late 2024 with a completion in 25, so are. The timing for the Eustick Maintenance Complex and Apple, which I'll talk about in a few slides as well. But the Eustick Maintenance Complex is aligned in timing very well with the road widening, so I think that's going to meet the intent very well. Here's where we are on the design timeline. We are with an architectural firm who's designing both our Eustick property and the property that we have at Apple and Federal Way. So they're being designed together, we're getting a lot of benefit from having that designed together, since the bulk of the buildings are going to be almost exactly the same on both facilities. There will be some differences in site layout, obviously, for the unique terrain considerations. Eustick being near the floodplain, those are all considerations that we have to take into account for the design layout. And then our timeline, as you see here below, we're we're aligned with the programming verification and planning all the way up to our 30% design. And then when we go for design reviews. That's when we start to see potentially a split in our timelines, but for the most part, we're marching together, it really just depends how long it takes. For City of Meridian and Apple is in City of Boise, so different. Different councils and different review timelines. But we anticipate both complexes for our construction documents to be complete and in mid 2024 with construction to follow shortly thereafter. We are going to be working with CMGC to oversee the the construction management. And general contractor work, so we're going to have eyes on both of these con complexes in the buildup to ensure they stay on time. So this is the layout, and as you may recall. The the location of the property is between 10 Mile and Black Cat. Since we last came to you, there have been just some minor adjustments in how we think it's going to lay out, but again, we're still in the very early stages of design. And these things will go through the design review process, and there may be additional changes. But some of the things I did want to point out. Down here in the bottom left or the southwest corner is where the admin facility will be. And the image that you see here is the concept that we're trying to to kind of go with. Some of the same architectural styles we've seen throughout Meridian, this is actually. The administrative building that's being built at our Franklin Yard, which is going to be starting construction very soon. So we're as that new yard, the Franklin Complex where our traffic maintenance complex is going to be. As that TMC is being built, we're trying to align a lot of the same styles in buildings. So that there's a little bit of cohesion and and brand identity for Ada County Highway District. But we do recognize that as we go through design review, there there may be some changes along the way, but I think in general, the concept kind of aligns with the image you like to see. Throughout the City of Meridian. A few other things that I'd highlight down on the the lower end, you've got the Eustick Road with the deceleration lane. And then that'll be the Naomi Road moving up from that, and we'll have a turnaround at the end of that. For future build out for road connectivity in the future. Two entrances into the yard or into the complex, and it'll all be fenced in. On the north end, you can see the pathway that we've been working with the Parks Department on. And then we've got connectivity from that pathway that'll go along the edge of our complex and connect all the way. To Eustick or that intersection that again will be signalized. Just a few buildings, just the concepts again, the Salt and Sand Shed, you're familiar, you might be familiar with what our Salt and Sand Sheds looks like. At at our facility on Adams Street. The intent of this is going to be a permanent structure, so not that temporary structure, and it'll be much lower in height than the one we have on our current property. And then just as a as an example, on the left side, you see, this is just right now, the concept for the broom shed. We're we're building based on the number of sweeper brooms that we're going to have. But we're trying to lay out the yard with the ability to expand in the future, that's one of the things that we found is a. A challenge in our current properties is there's no room to expand, so putting the facilities in locations where we know, okay, in the future, it'll build out this way. And and preserving that space in the layout for future growth. This is the list of all the buildings, pretty much they're going to be on the facility, so the intent is full operation. Full maintenance operations, so the administrative building, we're going to have a decant facility, this is where. The the sweeper and the vac trucks, factor trucks dump out, and it's going to need to be covered that keeps the stormwater out of it, so we maintain our stormwater on the property. And then we don't intermix into the the decant, we'll have the salt shed, broom shed and drainage shed, two very important. Buildings for maintaining our NPDES permitting. So it's very critical that we that we get those up and running and increase. Our capabilities and operations for those functions. Wash Bay on the facility, fleet building and weld shop also on the facility, fuel islands and then magnesium chloride tanks and miscellaneous enclosed and covered storage for. For tools and equipment. So the benefits, again, we're building to the immediate need, but preserving footprint for future growth. And and the biggest benefit, I think, is the reduced response timelines for maintenance operations throughout. Meridian and areas to the west where a lot of the growth in Ada County has happened. So critical location for us and. And our timeline, I think, is is good, estimated cost, right now, it's about 25 million. We'll we'll see once once those other costs start coming in, once the design is complete and we know. What the what building materials cost, some of the things that we're learning are prefab buildings or. Over a year out when you're purchasing those, so there's a lot of considerations with cost and timeline that once we get closer to the full. 100%, we'll we'll have a better site picture on that. I did want to talk a little bit about our integrated five year work plan specifically in regards to the widening. And Justin can go into any more details about about that. Our facility sits between 10 Mile and Black Cat, and as you can see, design year and right away year 2022, the design started. Starting right away this year, construction is going to begin in 2024, and we anticipate it's probably going to be late 2024. So you're going to see that construction happening between 24 and 25. But you've got the whole stretch of roadway, these two miles will be aligned together on the same timeline. You've got various bridge projects along the way and the Naomi Avenue Signal. And the Black Cat Signal that you stick as well, so lots of upgrades happening, and again, that's that's in Justin's lane, if you have any specific questions. But the intent is widen Eustick Road to five lanes, curb gutter sidewalk and a level three bike facility. The Eustick or yeah, the Eustick Yard, as I mentioned, is bigger, part of a bigger site picture for our phasing. So the complex that we're building, we've got Franklin Yard that is at Franklin and and near Cloverdale. So our traffic maintenance center is going to be moving there, they're already through their design review. And they're going to be starting their the groundbreaking and building construction this year already. And so we anticipate that full operation to happen in 2024. The Eustick widening widening is key to our Eustick facility building out. Based on where we are on design, we imagine we'll start that construction in 2024, so Justin and I were even just talking about how much we can align some of that construction. To really work together and maybe some leverage and in some of those pieces and parts. I mentioned our Apple, Apple Complex. That's another one that we're trying to align just to have the economy of scale with having the same design. And getting that built along the same lines as well, and that all kind of feeds into what's going to happen at the Adams Yard, so. Lots of pieces and parts moving, so we're very excited that that we're that we're underway and. And growing to help meet the needs of Ada County. So summary again, we're in design, anticipate 100% completion in May of 24. Five year build out 2028, I did want to mention on the site, if you've passed by there, we used to have a house on the on the corner. That has been demolished, so that's the first step's already done, it's just a bare field now, and we've got a. Blank canvas from which to work, so we're real excited about the future. And with that, I will stand for any questions.
Thank you. Council, commission, questions, comments?
Nice. Thank you.
That's important.
Yeah, a couple of questions, where does the traffic ops move? That leaves Adams, I just noticed it and was curious where it where it gets relocated to.
It to the Franklin Franklin Complex, yeah, so that's on Franklin, just west of Cloverdale.
Okay, thank you very much. And last item up is the integrated five year work plan process. And this is something I know our our council's very interested to learn more about, so they have a better understanding, so we really appreciate. The conversation and information.
Well, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Madam President. Commissioners, council, council members. When my presentation comes up, I'd be happy to go. It's not on my screen. Just me, I'm the only thing on there. I mean, I can just talk. I'm pretty correct. There we go, no, no worries at all. Um, so just for the record, Kristi Insman, I'm the Planning and Programming Supervisor here at Ada County Highway District. And myself and Margaret Zellis is also here today are the principal planners on the development of the integrated five year work. That's what we're here to talk about today, so I'm kind of basically, I'm giving an overview, a very high level. Of what our process looks like for the integrated five year work plan, it is a year long process that we do start. As soon as we adopt one, we typically immediately jump right into the next one, because it's a never ending process. So first, we start with what the integrated five year work plan is. So the plan itself integrates our construction and maintenance programs into one place. The implement, it's an implementation tool of our long range plans, so adopted plans, our neighborhood plans, our CIP. Our asset management, our ADA plan, there's a lot that goes into, I guess I should stand in front of this one. It also is our outward facing component where we educate the public. And our partner agencies as to what our plans are for the future capital projects. It also creates that level of transparency as to what we're we're doing over the next five years. It's our implementation tool for our capital budget. It also is the tool that we use to also coordinate closely with our partner agencies, the cities, the county, school districts. BRT and BSU were added as partners on this as well, so we coordinate quite closely. So I always like to say that the five year work plan is actually not created in a vacuum. There's a ton of public outreach and there's a ton of coordination, so this is this is a nice slide that I like to show just as far as how everything kind of works together, it's not. Separate, everything flows into the integrated five year work plan, it kind of starts at the county and city levels. With their comprehensive plan, future land use, how they anticipate their areas to be grown out, and that feeds into the CIM, Canoe's in Motion. Which also goes into our strategic plan, as you can see, it all kind of flows down, the middle there are. Specific strategic documents that we also utilize in the development of the integrated five year work plan. That's our asset management, our ADA plan, bike master plan, neighborhood plan, and our capital improvements plan. And for project selection, I know that's always a question is how do we select projects for the integrated five year work plan? So it's a multi layered process, right? On the right side, you see, we get it, there's never a shortage of projects, that is definitely something I like to say, because there is never, there's never a shortage. Ever of projects, if you just looked at our neighborhood plans that we just. If you just looked at our neighborhood plans that we just finished the last iteration of, I think we're up to about 1,500 identified projects just within the neighborhood plans. That's not even the bike master plan, that's not the capital improvement plan. So we get them from a lot of locations, so existing plans, individual project requests from the public and from our partner agencies, as well as we have an application process. That a individual can submit a community programs application on their street. They want sidewalk, get their neighbors involved. There's multiple opportunities for somebody to do that. We just went through our public outreach. And that ended in July, or sorry, not July, January, they all run together. Into, in January and this latest effort, we expanded our outreach and we changed how we were asking for people to tell us what they wanted around the county. On average, we were getting during that initial public outreach between 50 and 75 project requests. This time there were 1,350 individual comments that we received all across the county. And it was amazing, a lot of information, but it was amazing. We were super excited about that. So we continue to evolve and we continue to be as outward facing as we can. So we can make sure that we're, we are programming the best projects in the plan. So once we, we also just finished, you guys just submitted your prioritization requests that were, all came in last week that are currently being reviewed. And we will actually be going to the commission in March to share with them what all of our partner agencies asked for. So all of that is compiled and then Margaret and myself, we're, we'll shut ourselves in a very dark corner and prioritize projects for a good two months is the next phase. And so that's kind of in the middle. So we have our industry leading prioritization process. Your staff and your jurisdiction also participated in that process when we upgraded and did an evaluation of our prioritization process. So again, we're talking thousands of projects that we poke through that, put, put through that process. I do like to say also prioritization is just one com- component of how we program the integrated five year work plan because obviously there are things that come up and there are things that are, that take priority. Something that may rank high isn't a priority for the city that goes into it. So there's, it's definitely one component and it helps guide us into which projects we decide to move into the plan. And all just flows into the development of the plan. And so then putting that all together, this is kind of a snapshot of our process. So it's just to show that there are a lot of stages to the development of the integrated five year work plan. So this is a flow chart, the ones that are kind of on the top that are a little bit grayed out. That's kind of where we finished in the process. So the next steps we're moving into, we're in the middle of also project scoping. So project scoping is before a project can actually make it into the plan. We need to know, is it feasible? How much does it cost? What components likely are going to go with that so that we can budget appropriately for that project? So we currently scope between 75 and 100 projects every year. And then sometimes we have to. So we're in that process and then we'll also, that'll flow into our prioritization. Excuse me. So there's that, there's our, we look at, when we're looking at projects, we look at also geographic equity, what our partner agencies are asking for, what the available funding is. Because if I had a magic wand and all the money in the world, you can get a 10 more projects done. But there are limitations. And then there's specified capital allocation methodology that our commission sets for the different programs and the funding's allocation on what we're spending money on in general. I'm sure you guys have seen lately, community programs continues to be a focus where we continue to allocate additional funding to get more of those projects. Again, that all flows into the integrated five year work plan. This is just kind of another snapshot of the process. This one focuses more on our conversations and our work sessions with our commission directly on this. The grayed out ones are ones that we've already held. So we did a kickoff back in October as well as some little iterations in between of where we're meeting with our partners and how you guys are included in that process. So we did a public outreach session in January. We did another one in, in February and we'll go back to them in March, all the way around to an anticipated adoption date of the end of September. So we follow about a month behind the adoption of our budget that happens at the end of August. What I have for you, but I'm happy. Oh, that was a backup slide. It's just more about our process. There's more highlights and I'm happy to stand for any questions that you might have on our process.
Thank you, Chrissy. Council, commission, questions? Commission President Patrini?
Yeah, I just want to say thanks, Christie. Yeah, we're eagerly looking forward to reviewing your, your priorities. And we're, you know, as Christie talked about, she highlighted it, but I do want to emphasize that last year we didn't do an integrated five year work plan because we wanted to assess how is it working? How does it compare to other jurisdictions across the country? And how do they weigh these various priorities across a very dynamic and diverse community set, right, of within our county? And so after taking that pause, we, it actually validated that our process is pretty top notch and we've refined it and I think all massive kudos to our team. You can see that that success rate in terms of the amount of folks that have weighed in and that increase that has happened over the course of two years. So I just want to say thank you to the council for prioritizing your projects and saying that in as well as the Meridian residents because we really value that feedback and we're weighing it accordingly.
Mr. Mayor, Madam President. I do want to add because she did touch on the prioritization, I wish I had added a slide about that. But we did, one of, some of the changes that we did make to that prioritization process is we did give more weight. Is it scoring basically a point, 100 point scale? We did give more scoring weight to a city or county, our partner agencies request. We also added the LTS component to it, the level of traffic stress component to it. So if it's going to lower it, that adds it. And we also increased the weight given if it's near a safe routes, the school. So those were some of the very positive changes that we made in our prioritization process. It again is going to help inform us on what projects.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Overton.
Not trying to set you up because it's a tough situation. We tried to get our heads around the priority list here a few weeks ago. And topic kept coming up. Our list is extremely long. When we look at how many of those top priorities? The concern became by members of council is, well, if we take 20, we take 31 and we bump it to 29, that's, that's the cutoff. Are we correct, is there some sort of a cutoff of our 50, 60, 75 project list that we're trying to get stuff into that we're trying to set our priorities? And could those then get bumped when you put them into your formula? Would it, could it possibly move what we turn in or we say are our priority?
Mr. Mayor, Madam President, Councilmember Overton. We want our jurisdictions to tell their story. We don't set a limit. We don't say if you can only give us 20 project and that's it. We, we, if you, a lot of our jurisdictions utilize that list for, hey, here's our most important, but here's things coming up that we know we want. And they use it as a tracking. So there's, there's no cutoff. If it, if it's on the list, it gets at least some points during that prioritization process. What help, what can help elevate a project to, if multiple jurisdictions are asking for a project? So if the city is asking for it and the school district is asking for it, it may elevate that in the overall prioritization. So bumping it out. We, we, once it makes it in the plan, our goal is for that to continue into the plan unless we hear something specific for it to be removed for some reason. That, hey, this is, we don't care about this one anymore. That very rarely if ever happens. Once it's in the plan, it will continue to work up through the process. Because generally speaking, it made it into the pan, plan for a reason. It was a good project, there was a need, there was a desire by the neighborhood or our partner agencies for it to be added in. So no, that's not, that's not the goal to kick stuff out. Stuff may be delayed for funding reasons or, but yes, no, it'll continue to go in.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Scherer.
Two questions. One is kind of specific, but it's just an example of, I think, a different iteration of the same question you were just asked. We've been having a tough time with McMillan. It's been a struggle. Traffic level stress, I think it was E, but the data seemed like it was outdated that informed that level of stress. This is from a project we looked at for a development locally. McMillan's not programmed to be widened for quite a while. And part of that is there's a huge canal and that's a reality that all of us acknowledge. But McMillan is a huge priority for us and it seems like it's becoming more important. If we put McMillan somewhere in the top, say 12, are we kind of like wasting a spot? If you guys just feel at the end of the day, you know, the canal is, just makes this unfeasible. That's part of what we wanted to understand about that specific corridor was, we think it's really important. What's your view on it? Is it programmed out to like 2034 because it's just not economically feasible? I know that's really, yeah, maybe bring it, bring him in for sure. But that's one we had a real question about, like, if we put this in our top 12, are we kind of like wasting a spot in your view?
Mr. Mayor, Madam President, Councilwoman Scherer, it's a really valid question. I'll do my best to answer it with the information we have in front of us today. So McMillan is a, is a unique corridor. For most of it, if not all of it, all the way out to Black Cat, the intersections have been improved. Whether that was through a developer cooperative project or an ACHD project. McMillan to the, to the west of, of Locust Grove is also scheduled only to be a, a three lane roadway. ACHD has no plans to widen that roadway to five lanes. And that's a, from a planning document and a decision that's been made for many, many years, which is kind of in our master street map and our capital improvements plan. We do get feedback from some members of the community out there that they would like to see it widen beyond that. And, and here's just kind of how we, we typically respond to those types of things. You know, as the network grows and changes, we have to take the long view. And I know we get accused all the time of not doing that, but our goal is to do that. Chindon is scheduled to be in the long term, three lanes in each direction. I mean, Chindon is scheduled to really move a lot of traffic. And, and how we've looked at McMillan over the years is if Chindon is really intended to do that, we would like, if possible, to preserve McMillan as a three lane roadway. So it doesn't have to move that much traffic and so that we're not drawing traffic towards it. And so that's kind of the, how, how McMillan plays out from a regional perspective. In the short term, I know it does get a lot of use and I happen to live very close to that corridor and drive McMillan a lot. But in the long term, that's, that's the, the vision that at least for now, that the two agencies have, have agreed to. And there's other corridors like that in our, in the city of Meridian. From a prioritization perspective, because McMillan is only intended to be a, a three lane roadway, one lane in each direction. To widen it, all we would be really doing is to add a center turn lane. So the capacity enhancement that some of the members of the public may be wanting on that corridor is not currently in our plan. And so that's, that's kind of how some of those corridors play out. Now, these are decisions obviously that have been made over many, many years. And in no way am I trying to advocate for one thing or the other. I'm just telling you where we are today on a corridor or corridor like McMillan.
Mr. Mayor.
That's what I'm sharing.
You know, that's the exact kind of just, you know, no BS kind of talk I was looking for. Here's the thing, and I just have a little piece of feedback though back for you, which is, I understand that and that's good for us all acknowledge that fact pattern. The challenge I think we're running into is going forward on McMillan, when developers are getting a letter from you about the level of service and capacity on a roadway. If, if we're talking about McMillan specifically, I would just urge you to be very direct about the level of service, the direction you think it's going to go. How old the data may be, or I would encourage you to update the data for McMillan specifically because I am concerned that we're sending a message to the development community, like, hey, you have a green light. From ACHD's perspective to, you know, continue building out and a significant number, especially of multifamily units along that corridor. But I'm concerned that based on your feedback, the capacity will not increase at any point. And so to your point, sure, at some point maybe Chindon and there's a whole corridor on Ustick could help. I mean, there's a whole bunch of things that could help, but there's really no relief coming in the next decade that I can see that's going to immediately help the situation if we build that out too much. So that, that's just a piece of feedback is, as you're, you know, because we read these letters and, and we care a lot about feedback from our partners. So when we read your letters about, you know, a development along that corridor, we really take that seriously. So I would just, just on that quarter specifically, that was one piece of feedback was to really take a look at what message you're sending. And I did have one quick question, Mr. Mayor, if I can.
Councilwoman Scherer.
I can sneak it in. Geographic equity, that's a big topic. How, can you just give me like a quick overview of how you try to tackle that between these different jurisdictions? Of course, we have, we have the opinion, everyone's going through Meridian to get somewhere. We are building up our job base, that's helping a lot. But like Kuna, for example, we just recently looked at how much traffic's coming from Kuna to go into work right in the heart of Meridian. Do you guys take trips into consideration? Is it based on population? How do you try to tackle that geographic equity component?
Mr. Mayor, Madam President, Councilwoman Scherer. We, we actually follow that quite closely on funding and how, how much is being spent in each jurisdiction. And obviously there's going to be dips. You know, there'll be valleys and there'll be peaks. There'll be some years that we're spending, because as you guys know, we have a lot of Ustick and a lot of large CIP projects that are currently programmed in Meridian. So there's going to be years where Meridian is going to see a huge peak on funding allocation for your jurisdiction and others may not. We have to look at the countywide needs and there's areas where we're going to see a huge spike in one area or another. But we do track that, we actually have that information where we track annually. And we track over a long period of time as well as how we're allocating those funds. And over a period of time, we're actually really close to being geographically equitable to funding that we receive, those jurisdictions to what we're spending in those areas. And then every jurisdiction is a little bit different as to what their needs are in a given year. Some areas, their arterial roadway network is built out. So their needs and they're an older area that sidewalk and pedestrian infrastructure was never built. So their needs and their focus are going to be bike and pedestrian infrastructure. Where other areas, their newer subdivision, all of that's built out and the needs are the roadway network. So we do track it, we actually, we actually do track the amount of money that's spent in every jurisdiction.
And if I could just highlight, I think it's, you, you mentioned it, but just to elevate it, it's what's collected versus what's spent in those areas. So it's not like Meridian gets 100 million and Kuna gets 100 million. It's what we collect through impact fees and other adverse compared to what they collect to a certain extent.
Mr. Mayor, that's.
Mr. Mayor and
Commissioner Hanson.
President Fikering, if you'll let me brag on the work that, that Christie and Margaret have done. I mean, it is, having been on the commission now 10 years, we are light years ahead of where we were before. And one of the tools, there's seldom a day goes by where I don't use it. So I really encourage you to just bookmark it and use it is the interactive map on the website for the five year work plan. Because you're going to get a call from constituents, you do. And it makes you sound really smart because you're sitting there at a computer, you open the map and then you click on it and you say, oh, I see that ACHD has that to be going into design in 2025 and, and right away acquisition in 2026 and then construction sometime in the future, but we're doing the plan right now. So get your input in and, and so that's exactly what you'll see is the map will tell you where we are right now. And so that map will change obviously through this updating process. The other is, there's another map that was done, it was, it's cool, first time this year, Margaret managed it. It was, the public then got in and clicked on this map and said, I want this done at this location. And so they were able to click on it and said, hey, there's no sidewalk here, we want this. Or there's a massive amount of speeding in this part of the neighborhood. We need to get some traffic calming here. And so they would click on that. And so that's where all these, we were all given the list of the public comments from our district that are being sorted through. the list of the public comments from our district that are being sorted through. That's what Christie and Margaret are talking about. But you can actually still look at that map and see what your constituents responded to in response to that. The other thing is we made a commission direction a couple of years ago that to the extent we can do it, let's just go into a street once. So if, if, if the initial is, okay, there's some ADA problems, we don't have ADA ramps. Let's find out if the, the surface of the road needs to be fixed. You know, it's the PCI is really bad or there's a crossing or there's some speeding. What are some of these other things? So that when we go in there, we get it done and we don't have to go in for another, I don't know, 50 years maybe. So that's another thing. And sometimes that then you'll see these things get connected and that'll appear on it. So use that online tool, it's, it's fantastic and use it as you, as you identify your own priorities.
Councilwoman Borton.
One quick question, Christie. You mentioned the point scale and some things got greater weight recently. What characteristics had their point value reduced area lower weight?
Mr. Mayor, Madam President, Council, Councilman Borton. So what we did was, I don't know if I can answer specifically what, but we did. Previously, we had our bikeways were under a separate prioritization from our crossings, which were separate from our sidewalk. And as Counselor, Commissioner Hanson just said, we're, we have a go in once approach. So it really didn't make sense for us to rank just a crossing when typically when we're going in, we're also adding sidewalk. We're also looking at bike ways, we're also looking at all those components. So what we did is we actually combined and we just have one prioritization for our community programs. So we're on a bike way, we would have had high points if it was in the bikeway master plan or if it was, you know, in a, that's been condensed. So it's the point values between the different plans, some things went out of the, out of that, that ranking. But there really wasn't a reduction in the, in the key items on that plan. And we have, I'm happy to share with you guys what our prior prioritization was and what the point values were and what they are now. So you can see that comparison.
Do you still factor in the Meridian bonus point?
Legacy points.
Touche. Commissioner Galtor.
Interesting that Joe should say that. But the comment was made about everybody goes through Meridian wherever they're going, and that is an absolute fact. In fact, I remember when the previous mayor was trying to put some really huge emphasis on that with regards to Meridian Road and that part of the county. And I think she used the comparison to a toilet flushing twice a day. And it was, it was very graphic, it made the point and we got the message. One of the things that, that you suffer from, and I'll use that term sincerely, is the huge, huge influx of vehicles that come through your city twice a day that come from outside of Ada County. And that's something that we were trying desperately to receive some acknowledgement and compensation for, so that we can accommodate that faster and more. It'll never come fast enough and this year is probably not when it's going to come, trust me. But we hear you, we know it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any additional questions or comments? All right.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner President Pcrene.
I just want to say thank you to you, Mr. Mayor, thank you to staff, thank you to council members. I really appreciated your questions and your feedback. I just, yeah, we will definitely incorporate all of those thoughts and continue to improve and hopefully deepen our partnership with you all so we can better serve each other. And just thank you for the opportunity, appreciate it.
I think we agree as well. So appreciate you having the dialogue and the presentations from staff and updates on, on all that stuff. It's all very good and the fort to continue partnership on stuff. So with that, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Ogden.
I move we, that we adjourn our joint meeting. A motion to adjourn all in favor, saying by saying aye.